You know, I think a bunch of others put them out.
But hey, all I gotta say is that today we need our stuff back from there. Six tables and six chairs. Ms. Lita says there are a lot of stuff they want to repair or something.
I've got one of these complex wells. I'm learning to type perfect.
All right, I think it's seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would ask that Pastor Cynthia Hope from the Visionary Christian Church, if she will lead us in prayer, and I'll lead us in political allegiance. Y'all please stand.
Good evening. I just pray with you. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father, we come to you tonight just to say thank you. We thank you, Father, for first forgiving us of all of our sins. We thank you, God, for allowing this gathering of the Alma City Council tonight. We ask God that you come in. We ask God that you bring a sense of unity. We ask God that you give them ears to hear, eyes to see, and God, hearts that are mobile to your will. Let every decision be made for the great citizens of Alma and the community beyond. Everything be done in order, Father, as it should be, and just keeping our citizens and our community in mind. And Father, we thank you for all that you've done. We thank you for all that you're doing. And Father, as we close this prayer, we ask that you watch over our world. We ask that you give us leaders with a heart for people. We ask that you watch over Israel. We ask that you watch over Ukraine. We ask that you just watch over all the death and dying that's going on around us. And Father, we thank you that we live in a country that we're able to come to you in prayer, that we're able to speak your name loudly, that we're able not to be ashamed of who you are and to say that we love you. And Father, we ask these things in the mighty Maxus' name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the road for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanna ask Ms. Teague if she would do a roll call?
Sandra Polpatrick. Mary Blasen gang.
Here.
James McGee.
Here.
Evan Thacker.
Here.
Damon Brown.
Here.
Gary Perry.
Yeah.
Have it for you in your packet, the minutes for last meeting, September twenty-one. Let you look over those and see if there are any amendments or changes or anything you need. If not, we need to approve them.
I'm moving to accept.
Does it have a motion? Does it have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. No committee reports, no citizens forum, no unfinished business, quite a bit of new business. The first part is, as you know, the previous clerk treasurer has resigned a month ago tonight. The city attorney has advised that the laws provide for appointment at the first regular meeting following a vacancy, which is tonight. The city attorney suggests that the council declare the position vacant by motion at tonight's meeting. The council will then appoint someone to fill the remainder of the term at the next regular meeting and no finish. So if I could have a motion.
Make a motion to declare the position vacant.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next order of business is to delegate the duties of the city clerk. If I could get a motion from Mr. Perry, I think.
Yes, I'm going to temporarily delegate and assign all duties which have been delegated of the office of clerk treasurer to city employee Rhonda Teague.
A second.
We have a second. Let's do a roll call on this, please.
Sandra Polpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
Thank you. We need, we have run across some items that the previous mayor may not have signed and the previous clerk may not have signed. Things that happened last year and the first part of this year. And we're just seeking a motion to give Rhonda and I the authority to sign. There are minutes and resolutions, basically, that just did not, for whatever reason, get signed by those people.
All of these were passed.
Yes, 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 yes. They just, for whatever reason, we didn't get the signatures.
So moved.
Have a motion at the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The next item is, back in two thousand and one, I think I remember the line. Let me double check. Yes. Two thousand and one, the city passed a resolution has to do with asset listing. And if you recall during our audit, even in two thousand and twenty-one, which we had a very good, clean audit, the only reportable finding was not, was not, we did not have an accurate asset listing. And in twenty-two, we did not. This goes back to twenty seventeen, actually. Rhonda and I and Wayne have sat down and visited and we're starting to work on that. And we thought that maybe the council would be willing to look at raising the limit. What this says to amend the resolution, the original resolution says anything that's purchased for twenty-five hundred dollars needs to go on that listing. And that's twenty-two years ago. With inflation and everything, we thought possibly it would be okay to increase that. We talked to Greenwood, we talked to Van Buren, we talked to Fort Smith. There's, Greenwood, I'll take Greenwood, for instance. Greenwood was three thousand, still three thousand dollars, but they, it was broken down, land twenty-five thousand, equipment, and anything that was, did not have a life expectancy over three years, they had listed. And I, I would prefer, if the council did, not to be so complicated in trying to determine life usage, but to use a number, sixty-five hundred dollars or whatever. What this says is, anything we purchase for sixty-five hundred dollars, we have to have asset listing and accountability for it. Now, that's going from three thousand, so I don't know if the council would approve that, but the three thousand was approved back in twenty-two years ago. We can hardly buy a lawn mower for sixty-five hundred anymore. I'm just trying to, not try, not trying to suggest we do anything not to keep up with our assets, but to get a number that would be easier to, you know, do we want to buy something for twenty-two hundred dollars and have to keep up with it as well? So I'll open it up for discussion.
So what's, what's the, what's the amount you're asking for? Six thousand, seven thousand?
Sixty-five hundred.
Six thousand five hundred.
And if that's too much, too little?
So what type of assets would we have currently that we are, that would be within this range?
The three thousand dollar.
And the twenty-five hundred here.
Twenty-five hundred.
That would be.
We did.
Some of those.
Oh, let me, oh, gosh, I just went blank.
Sorry, I kinda put you on.
No, 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 that's fine. Yeah, okay, yeah. I can't even think of one.
Okay. Stuff to go to those trailers and stuff.
Yeah, trailer.
And we would want, we want bigger things like that probably listed.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Lawn mower, I mean, riding lawnmowers for certain now.
Anything that. Eight thousand dollars.
And if sixty-five hundred's too much, I mean, I'm, I'm okay. We just need to get us a number so we can start going forward and get this.
So we, I was about to ask, would, would that include like computers and things like that? Do we have a reason we would want to not? I'm asking just, I don't understand why not, not for any reason. Do we have any reason we would want to not include things like computer packages or some of those things? Like this above?
No, a new computer now, what, fifteen hundred?
Right. So that's kinda probably.
It's just more pay, I mean, yeah, that's the, we, we don't want to.
They appreciate it, right?
Yeah, we don't want to not keep up with anything, everything we own, you know, and, and, but it does just get cumbersome if it's, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars.
So we'll answer this. So you said City Greenwood has different.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, we're not trying to reinvent.
No, no, no.
How, I guess how are some of our peers doing?
Okay. Greenwood is three thousand dollars with a life expectancy of more than three years. I mean, and then they come back with, they have different criteria. Buildings fifty thousand, machinery two thousand, infrastructure a hundred thousand, land improvements twenty-five thousand. And that's okay. I mean, I don't, but it, and of course, Fort Smith is really not comparable. Theirs is minimum twenty thousand, but I mean, they're so, so much larger. And Van Buren, Van Buren was three thousand with a life expectancy over three years.
I'm going to climb with that. Yeah, I mean, that's a great appreciation side.
Would that still accomplish, kind of what you mentioned, stuff like the hard part of equipment and stuff on, that still kind of accomplish, like making things a little bit easier on us? Or just change the number on paper and it's the same deal?
You know, it'd be better to where we are.
Basically, they're disposable.
Yeah, but then, how accurate are we on the life expectancy of that, you know, depreciable asset?
I make a motion of four thousand with a three-year, with a life span. Awesome.
We, we have a motion, as I'm saying, that our asset listing will include everything with a purchase price of four thousand dollars, expectancy of life to equal or exceed three years. We have a second.
A second.
Second. Better to roll call.
Sandra Polpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes, am I, am I gonna be last tonight, every time? No, I'm only kidding.
Neither is last is first. Pastor Kelly, neither is last is first. All right. We need, the next item is a little housekeeping, and Cody may have to explain this. Back in twenty twenty-three, no, I'm sorry, back in January of twenty twenty-two, we passed a resolution having to do with a conditional use permit. We have in the minutes, a number that reads thirteen. We have in the resolution, a number that says fifteen. And what we're proposing, Cody, you speak to this when necessary, that we amend the minutes to be correct with the resolution being fifteen instead of thirteen.
Yeah, I know a couple of you guys weren't here during that time, but during that time period, I wanted fifteen days instead of what Sean put for thirteen, because fifteen matched what a lot of what we do with our, with our other zoning and variance publishing dates. So I've written out, I already had thirteen written out, but I changed the number to fifteen. And I forgot to change that to fifteen on the written out part. So that's all it was, was that needed to be corrected. But the notes. The notes are saying you didn't want to amend them anyway in this, so they just had it wrong in the minutes, that's all. Had it wrong in the minutes, that we wanted to update, update to read thirteen instead of fifteen, and have it the other way around. I got you. I just want, I make a motion that we amend those minutes.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Polpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution submitting the millage rates for the year twenty twenty-three that someone mentioned, Moby and I. And then the last paragraph, you can see that the rate shall be three point five mils on personal property, three point five mils on real property. Of this, point four for personnel and point four for real property. Real property should be fire-mispent and in relief, but this is something we do each year.
Is that same, same as it was last year?
Yes, yes, and report to the forum court. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll move that we accept that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. McGee, roll call.
Gary Perry. Damon Brown.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
Sandra Polpatrick.
Yes.
Thank you. Back in February of ninety-four, the city, with ordinance number ninety-four seven, approved an employee handbook. Mr. Yarner is gonna speak with you tonight about a possible change in that as far as, the handbook basically says you have to work forty hours to receive any type of benefits, and we're wanting to change that or amend, amend that to some less hours.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I, I think y'all have received a copy of that, the stuff with the yellow highlighting on it. And so, so here's the situation. Our, our current handbook is, is kind of in conflict with, with our benefit program. And a resolution would be to, to make, make this change. And the IRS defines a full-time employee for the purposes of health, health insurance benefits as being a person who works thirty hours a week or, or a hundred and thirty hours per month. And that is what the municipal league has adopted as their, their standard as well. So if we have an employee that works at least thirty hours a week in the city of Alma, we're required to put them on our health insurance if we're gonna be on, on the, on the municipal plan. So, and it's not that that's, that's, that's basically a federal regulation since, since the Healthcare Act started. So, and then second to that is the, the APERS program requires if an employee works just eighteen and a half hours a week, we have to put them on the retirement plan. So our employee handbook right now states that you have to work, you know, you have to have a regularly scheduled forty-hour work week in order to receive the employee benefits. And so that's, that's the language that's, that's, that's currently in the handbook. But what I'm, what I'm gonna request is that we, we add a different category of employment that's still full-time, but not necessarily forty hours per week. And the reason I say that, you know, we've talked about it before, we have an employee at the wastewater plant that for, for years now has not worked a full forty-hour week, and it's worked, it's, we don't really need a full forty-hour person, but to keep an employee, you have to offer some benefits or they're not gonna work for you. And, and with, and I didn't even realize that the employee handbook actually said what it said until Rhonda pointed it out to me. I didn't realize that it said that they weren't, they were ineligible for benefits if they didn't work a full forty hours. I did not know employee handbooks in there. So back when Jay retired and came back and worked, and he worked just a four-day week, he worked thirty-two hours a week, and we still, he still catches benefits, and, and I had no idea that our handbook said that. So that really has brought up an issue. Now, we also have Sarah who's working with Caitlin in the, in the street skate maintenance. And she doesn't really work a full forty hours. She works, you know, about thirty to thirty-two hours a week. And we've just been fine with that, you know, that's, that works for us. But, but there's not a category for that in our employee handbook. And that's what I'm asking y'all to establish is a, is another, another category of employment called special full-time employee. And this was something that Sean Brister reviewed, and this is what he came up with as a solution. We were trying to rewrite the language for full-time, but he suggested that we just, just add a category called special full-time. And, and the way it reads is that particular employee is not temporary or introductory, and they're regularly scheduled to work less than forty hours per week with department head approval, and that, that's the key to it. It's something that a department head would just decide this position, this position would fit that, you know, working between thirty and forty hours a week, but not necessarily a full forty. And, and it says generally, they are eligible for the city of Alma's benefit package for any programs to which they are able to participate pursuant to the rules of those programs. And so they would be in APERS already anyway, if they worked thirty hours. They would, they would be in the healthcare program automatically because those programs require that. But then in addition to that, there would be vacation, holidays, sick leave, and bereavement leave. And, and what I would like to offer for a solution is that they would accrue those benefits prorata based on, on the number of, of days they actually do work a week or the number of hours they work a week. So a forty-hour employee would earn so many days of vacation a year, and a thirty-hour employee would, would earn less, a prorata amount of that. So it doesn't, it doesn't put these, these special full-time employees at an advantage over the other employees by doing that. It just simply allows them to have benefits at some level. And, and Tony Maxwell that works out at the wastewater plant now, he's been there for thirty years. At some point, he's gonna, he's going to retire, and he said he would be very happy to come back and work, you know, you know, just four days a week or something instead of the, the, the full forty-hour schedule. And to keep that, keep that knowledge and, you know, that, that institutional knowledge that, that people have, it's, it's valuable to us. We've trained them. They've, they've been in those positions for years, and when they take that retirement, they're willing to come back and, and work longer to keep that here longer, then it's, it's to our benefit. So I'm asking y'all to consider adding this particular language to the, to the employee handbook. And obviously, this would be something that the, that would be, the department head would be the one deciding if this was an appropriate use of this, of this category.
Do we have an idea how many people would be special full-time right now?
Right now, I would have two. Sarah that works with Caitlin and then Charlie Joyce working.
There could be others.
Yeah, exactly. And, and as I say, I'll just apologize. I didn't even realize that, that that language was there, so we've been doing this anyway.
You know, our handbook is, and so, is not in compliance with the law.
Well, at least.
Except, I'm in this category.
When it comes to health insurance, it's not in compliance, and APERS. Because it, because what the language says is that they're not, they're ineligible for, for any of the benefits. But that's not true. They, they are eligible for, for two of the benefits just by working thirty hours. So with the APERS, they just work eighteen hours a week and they're eligible, so.
Larry, did you hear?
Neil, the question I have is, is this the most recent employee handbook that we have available? Because I know at one point, one of the previous city clerks was working on an updated version.
The only one I've seen.
I started it. It got taken over. Basically, they pulled the Van Buren handbook and tried to make it work, and it wouldn't. And so it never was brought before.
Okay, okay.
To my knowledge, it was never brought before council. It was never presented on that side.
Okay.
So I still have all those notes.
And I'll just, I'll, I'll just add to that, and Jeff can, can chime in if he wants to, but as department heads, we're not interested in throwing the book out. There's nothing wrong with our handbook. It needs a few tweaks, but it doesn't need to be thrown out in this massive document that's thick replacement. We just do not need that. It's got simple language in it now. It's easy to understand, and we don't want to overcomplicate employee handbook. I'll just say that's, that's our opinion. So, so we, we do think there are some revisions that need to be made, but, but, but to throw it out and start over is not something we would like to see happen.
So how did Sean say we need to change this by a resolution, ordinance, or how?
He didn't say.
I'm likely to have to amend that ordinance that passed.
It was my understanding of this and within the sector anyway, that he would like for us to make a decision, then he would prepare an amendment to the ordinance for next month. It's, it's the way I understand it. If the council is agreeable to what we're talking about.
Yeah, so he could, he could add the language.
Yes. Amend the ordinance is the way I understand it.
So the last paragraph is all we're concerned about, right?
Yeah, it's just that bottom, that bottom section is special full-time. That would just be added as an employee category with the, with the regular full-time and the part-time.
Now, I says, do we want to amend the previous one, or do we just want to kill it and just add this in and just adopt the same language, just twenty twenty-three dash whatever? Because I know sometimes in the.
Well, I would, I would suggest we not do that for now because there are gonna be some other amendments that come up. And I think we ought to kind of get this thing lined out where it needs to be and then maybe adopt it, you know, completely.
Yeah, that way it's, we're not gonna go over like that in nineteen ninety-nine.
But this will take care of the immediate issue that I have that I would like to resolve, and then, and then we could do something for the long term.
So Mark, you're the only department that this is gonna affect?
Yeah, Jeff said he's not, got anybody that fits into that category, is what I'm gonna, and I don't know about parks. I don't know if y'all ever had that.
Cody only works about eighteen hours.
You said Sean said edit two.
Well, it's my understanding from Sean, he would like for the council's opinion tonight to move forward with it, and he would, if we're in for, if we're in agreement on the special full-time employee, then he would prepare an amendment for the November meeting.
I would like.
That's one we would approve, isn't it?
Yes.
I, I know that we. So we need our yes on this?
Yeah, just a general yes. You don't have to vote on.
Anyone who wants to. Thanks, thank you. While you're up there, Tuesday night, whenever, Mark presented a, a copy of his twelve thirty-one twenty-two audit from Gamble Bond in Anderson, PA, out of Fort Smith. It was a clean audit. There was one in, can't use the word insignificant. There was one small item reported that's been a repeat item, which had to do with, if I recall, balancing the meter deposit account.
Right. There's a, well, there's two issues, and they're all, they're on here every year. It's been twenty-five years since I've been here, and these same do have always been on there. But it's segregation of duties, which, which basically means we need more staff in order to have better control in the accounts payable area, and we just can't do that. So he said that's, he said, we have to note that. We, we also understand that you can't. But nonetheless, he said, in, in an ideal situation, you would have different people doing all these different things. You just can't do that with a small department, so. He understands that, but he's got it listed as an auditor, so. And the other one was the reconciliation of the billing register and the meter deposit payable account. And as I told you all before, you know, I, I apologize for not having a solid answer. I just don't. I mean, we can't figure out why it's not doing that. It's, it's, you know, he says, it's, he noted it as an immaterial variance between those two reports, the general ledger and the, and the detailed balance for, for that account. It's the only one that's like that. We still, we still understand it. And we do think it has something to do with the way that it posts payments to, towards the customer's account, their balance, and then it also, it also posts money to, to, to send them a check for the remaining balance of their, of their deposit. Somewhere in that process, some of the way the post is, is, is just, and it's, it's like, as you said, it's an immaterial amount, but nonetheless, it's not balancing.
Everyone has, I think, had an opportunity to look at the audit. Do y'all have any questions of Mark regarding the audit?
No.
We need to.
Accept it.
Accept our.
Yeah, to accept the audit and the.
The response.
Findings, the findings, yes.
If you noted the findings.
I make a motion that we accept the audit as presented and along with the findings.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Polpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We'll get to the department reports now. Unfortunately, Chief Parsons is ill. I think he's been worn out trying to buy a fire truck. And Captain David Lee is gonna fill in for him tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, the county fire department responded to a total of fifteen calls. Eight medical, one during a storm damage, had a power outage, downed three, three downed, lost nine three. Three fire alarm calls, one vehicle fire, one grass fire, and one traffic accident for a total of fifteen. The only other thing I have, before the meeting, I passed out an updated proposal on a truck that we were looking at. Had the addition of the contingency for the engine. that we were looking at, had the addition of the contingency for the engine. I spoke with the mayor this morning.
Explain to the council what that's about.
They still think they can get us an engine prior to the twenty twenty-seven standard change. In the event they cannot, they put this in here, not to exceed the thirty thousand. If it does exceed the thirty thousand, the company will pick up the balance of it, not not the city. And if they're able to get an engine with the current standards, then they will refund that thirty thousand plus interest on when the truck's completed. The only other thing we had, we'd like the approval to move forward with this with this company to sign an agreement.
This is on the ladder truck?
Yes. The area from the land fire, the one from Tuesday.
Yes.
I noticed that the estimated prepayment discount fluctuating just.
It went up a little bit probably because of the addition of the thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
And Larry, as I understand it and you explained it better, we we the city have option of prepaying or not prepaying.
Correct.
We can keep the money invested arbitrage or we can give it to them. And if if the delivery date is nine hundred and ninety days, if it's below that, we owe them money, if it's over that, they owe us money.
Correct.
And we don't know the amount and I got to think if they put that nine hundred and ninety days in there, they're going to win.
Exactly.
Yeah, but so and and I don't think you gentlemen have come up with determination of whether we prepay or keep the money.
No, and that will that will come later.
Yeah, you don't have to have that.
After the agreement signed, we'll have a a that pre-bill meeting with the manufacturer and at that time, the final number will be set, provided we don't add anything that shouldn't change. And then when the bonds are issued, then we can determine what kind of interest rate if we determine if it's more or less than what the company offers and and we won't prepay.
Any further questions of Captain Lee?
Make a motion that we adopt this proposal. I mean, I hate to say expensive truck, but.
Are we adopting the proposal or allowing them?
Or allowing.
Now a second.
A second. Roll call.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Damon Brown?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Larry Blasengang?
Yes.
Senator Patrick?
Yes.
I want to publicly apologize to Captain David Lee, who is actually assistant fire chief.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Chief Porter?
Thank you all. First thing, Damon had requested an updated arrest report for the year and late this afternoon I emailed that to you guys and.
Yeah.
Talking to Damon, he's interested in that being something that you guys receive monthly, so we'll start doing that and and that's that's basic on our arrest, that's something that's easy for us to pull, so we'll start sending that out. I don't have a lot, just a couple things that's happened in the last month. Captain Wright and I attended attended the chief's conference in Hot Springs, learned learned a lot from the classes, obviously, but the most important thing from that's the networking from other agencies around the state. Next month, and like I recorded last, we've been visiting some other police departments that's newer, getting some ideas and some advice. Several things that we got back was there's and and I didn't know this even existed, but there's actually a class that's put on by the International Association of Chiefs of Police and it's held twice a year and it's coming up next month. The closest that that class would be held is in Dallas, but we've gotten really good feedback on it and and been told that it's a very valuable class. So Captain Wright and I will be attending that next month in Dallas and it's like a three day class, so it's not a long one, but which brings me to my next point, we'll actually be driving back the night of the council meeting next month, so him or I will not be here, but I will have a representative from our department here, which will probably be Lieutenant Caldwell. And then the only other thing is Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM is the National Prescription Drug Takeback. We're doing some of this this time, we're actually going to do it at Woods. And and we have the Dropbox here at the the police department, so the the amount of prescription drugs that we can get back in those events is normally a little bit to none, but the important thing is is us being out in the community and visiting, being members and but this time we're partnering with Argus Project and we're actually going to be doing a stuff the squad car for them during that. And if you don't know what that is, it's a kind of a dog and cat rescue nonprofit organization. They assist us a lot with with dogs that Officer Inch has here in town that that unfortunately would would have to go to the plane and be cut down. At times, they can they can find homes for them, so just a little bit and they don't charge us anything when they come in and help us and and they're very good. So just a little bit to try to give back to them, we'll be collecting items for them.
Is the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. It's ten AM to two PM. Y'all aren't busy and come hang out with us. Other than that, I I want to, I think you guys know this, but I want to brag on the the mayor's office a little bit, the mayor Rhonda and and Lang, they've been doing an excellent job, so.
What you said in that class book, Dallas?
It's planning, designing and constructing police facilities.
Chief told me that investments with Fable and other places, those chiefs that go to that, you will save so much time and money into knowing what to ask and what to do, you know, just to get the construction started, so I thought, yeah, I'll do it. Stay stay at a cheap place, but don't.
There's there's actually about three or four companies that does this class. This one is is sponsored by the International Association of Chiefs of Police and and some of the bigger departments like Fayetteville, since the mayor mentioned that, they actually sent a couple people to each one of the conference classes. Now, I'm not going to do that, but if we can attend one, then I will learn something.
Any other questions for the chief? I I'll mention that one of my goals was I would return every phone call I got and so far I have, but last week I got one, a scary one, it was a complaint about our police department. Crap, I hate to return this phone call. It was a two one four area code and I knew I was Texas, so I called, this lady answered and I said, I'm returning your call to the mayor of Alma and she said, well, you've got a real problem in your police department. And I said, ma'am, I am so sorry, I said, that's really shocks me. She said, well, we were through your community last week and we got pulled over and a guy, a man got out of an SUV, the black SUV with a big Alma on the side of it and he was rude and mean and ugly and mad and and I thought, man, I said, what was his name? And she read it off and I said, I just don't recognize that name, let me get back with you. I went over and then she said it was at four fifteen and, you know, she knew all hell the details and she was really upset and should have been if what she said was correct. So I said, chief, help me out here, I said, this, he said, I don't recognize that name, I don't even recognize a state policeman or county policeman, anyway. And he looked at all the, you know, looked at everything and he said, that's not believable. So I called her back and I said, ma'am, I've got a real problem, I said, I just don't believe, I I I don't want to say I don't believe you, but we don't have any evidence that that happened. I said, could you just please start reading that ticket to me? She said, yes, I'll read it to you, Alma, Texas. No, I said, I. She had the wrong city. She said, this, you apologize, I said, well, wear them out when you call. Anyway, believe, that's my first complaint, this one. Okay, Mark, you didn't finish.
All right, I trust y'all received the copy of your report, so I won't go into any details on those items unless you have any questions, but I guess tonight I would like to kind of revisit what we talked about Tuesday night with the the home serve and the serve line insurance offerings for the community and I guess we need to vote on that if we're going to if we're going to allow them to do this. So, I mean, if you have any additional questions besides what we talked about Tuesday night, I'll be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I would just ask you all to entertain your
your recommendation is that we be allowing them to offer all the all the services that they discussed for this.
Yes, yes. And we'll get, this is with the understanding that we'll get Sean to work with them as we prepare those documents and make sure everything is exactly as we believe it to be before we sign.
And at some point in the future, we'll readdress our leak program.
Do you guess the the leak adjustment program?
Okay, I I make a motion that we we move forward with that and let Sean start working with you on the coverage categories.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Yes.
Mr. McGee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. The next thing was just a reminder that we still need one more board member to be be trained. I did my due diligence.
I did I did mine as well.
Well, we have we have three, three that have that have completed the course, so we need one more to complete that and we have to do it in the year, so there's there's a few trainings left and there's some online stuff still to go, so I encourage you to get that done.
You might tell them how important it is, Mark, that we get this done.
Well, primarily, the the issue is that they could they could say that we're in fiscal distress if we don't do it and that's that could create a problem for, you know, we're looking at bonds, we're looking at getting some, hopefully some millions in free money, it's going to jeopardize that. We we don't have this done, we're not going to be eligible for those things, so that's that's the other part of it.
It's a critical.
It's super easy, it's super easy, I mean, it flows well, the instructor knows what he's talking about.
So Damon, how long would it take you to do that?
Eight to four.
One day, okay. You can get Jody to do it. You can get Jody to do it.
Oh, we don't have to be on them. Oh, I can, yeah. You can go in as James McGee. I've got a solid meetings myself.
All right, well, I just wanted to just throw that out there as a reminder, time is getting short, so I I brought you in a just a stack of papers with all the blue highlights on it and, you know, in our in our budget for this year, we budgeted for a vehicle for the wastewater plant, one for line maintenance and one in the street department. And unfortunately, what we budgeted was before everything went crazy with automobiles and when we budgeted thirty thousand dollars a piece for those for those trucks, well, I can just tell you the market is is not there for thirty thousand dollar trucks, it's just not. So the state bid for twenty twenty-three, actually, the for the vehicles that we buy, we buy the same type vehicle every time, it is now forty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-two on the state bid, that's the best the state could get in an offering on on those contracts. So the problem with that is there's none available through the state bid. So I I talked with the with Sean about it, about what our options were, and he said we could we could work with local dealerships as long as they were willing to to sell us something at state bid or less. And he said, we don't have to go through the state bid vendor and a state bid contract to get the vehicle as long as it it meets the the threshold that's set by the state bid. So what I've got here for you is the second page is a an offer that we got from Superior Dodge Chrysler in Assala Springs and they offered this this exact vehicle and and it's actually about a thousand dollar, a little less than a thousand dollars less than the state bid in their offering. And but what what Sean said is is if there's a comparable vehicle to this one that we can also substitute, it doesn't have to be this, it doesn't have to be the Ram fifteen hundred, it can be it can be a Chevrolet fifteen hundred. So the last page in here shows the Chevrolet fifteen hundred. And so it's the comparable vehicle to that Dodge. So I've got the state bid price is forty-seven four thirty-two, the the Dodge is forty-six five twenty-five and the Chevrolet is forty-six oh seventy-five. And those are the offers that I got from the local dealers and they meet within that state bid. So so here's the here's the the caveat here, they've released the state contract for next year, which is all the twenty twenty-four vehicles, and on the state contract for next year, there are zero half ton trucks available on the state bid next year, zero. There's not, nobody bid on it for next year. So that's a problem. And but we do have this, you know, this year's bid and we can still use that up until, you know, till the end of the year, so I'm requesting that you allow me to increase my budget, that's really what this is about, you know, I the legality of this Sean worked out for us, but but what I don't have is a budget to to cover these vehicles, I need, you know, an additional sixteen thousand per vehicle just to purchase these.
Three?
Three vehicles. One for the street department, one for line maintenance and the water department and one for the wastewater plant.
So we got three times forty-six.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Forty-eight thousand dollars additional.
Right, additional, yes, yes. And, you know, the the street department, that's that's not a problem, the water department, it's going to be a little tight for us to do it, we can make it work, we'll have to use some of our depreciation reserve to do it, we can do it. We don't have enough in the capital improvement to cover all the other things I budgeted plus that, but we can we can move some out of depreciation to do that. So financially, I can manage it, it's it's will you agree to, I don't, I'm not asking you to amend the budget today, I'm asking you at the end of the year to, I mean, go and order these, but then at the end of the year, we would adjust the budget to reflect that.
Are these new in addition to or are we replacing end of life for other ones?
End of life for others, we'll we'll dispose of vehicles, yeah.
And so this is, these are new to replace those?
And we've budgeted three, just.
Just to price.
We probably should do less than what they're going to cost, so.
Yeah, we just can't get them for for that budget price. Had I known, I would have just asked for a larger budget for each one when we went through the budgeting process, but I had no idea this is where we were getting at this.
Which, so you've got a couple bids here, which of these are you planning on?
Well, I would I would like for y'all to give me permission to still do some more research before I decide, but as long as I purchase one that's equivalent vehicle, but less than the state bid or equivalent state bid, allow me to go ahead.
Equal to or less than.
Yeah, really just increase my budget is what I'm asking you to do and then and then I'll have to do some more research to decide on which one to get.
You would like to increase your budget to the state bid number?
Yes, that that would be the easiest thing to do, yeah.
I make a motion that we increase the budget for these vehicles for the water and street and sewer departments to match the state bid on these trucks.
Now a second.
I have a second, roll call.
Senator Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasengang?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
I will actually have to amend the budget to reflect that at the end of the year.
Yes, at the end of the year, yes. And I'm sure there'll be other items in there that we'll have to make adjustments to, so we can just do all of it at one time. And then the last thing I would bring to your attention is that starting Friday night, tomorrow night, we're gonna be flushing the, the high-pressure plumbing, as we call it. It's, it's everything north of Interstate forty will be, uh, being flushed. Um, we've been hitting a lot of dirty water complaints, I don't know if y'all heard anything, but, but, um, we've had several customers here just in the last two weeks, uh, complain about, so go turn the faucet on and the water will be brown, and that's, we know what it is, it's the magnes. And that's because something has been stirred up along that path. So, um, uh, the other day, there was three households that were all right next door to each other that, that, um, that all had brown water. And so, uh, we need to get our lines flushed, so we're gonna start that Friday night. And we'll, we'll usually, we usually Friday night, Saturday night, and, and it's, and we follow up on Sunday night if we can't get it all done. So that's all happening in the late hours of the night, so nobody usually knows it's.
This weekend or next week?
This weekend will be the high-pressure plumbing, then next weekend, we'll do the low-pressure plumbing, which is everything south of Interstate forty. We, we start on that end because the water, we have to, you know, direction to flow it, so we, we start on that end and flow it that way, so.
Any other questions with Mark? I'll change, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Get the financial report. Oh, planning, always, I do it every time, brother, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I was gonna keep mine short. Uh, so, Q short, uh, sixteen permits issued in the month of September, uh, total revenue of sixteen ninety-one. Uh, September typically is a slower month excluding last year, that was a big anomaly with, uh, I believe, is it the schools? I believe it was the schools, but I can't remember exactly. So we're, uh, really October, uh, we're picking up a lot, so, uh, next month the quarter will be even better. Uh, the Johnson Dermatology has opened up, and next week, October twenty-sixth, they're having a ribbon cutting with their chamber at two thirty, so we're welcome to come out if you're available.
When's the coffee shop open tomorrow?
I would say in the next two or three weeks, his last piece of the restaurant equipment's supposed to be here tomorrow. He's been waiting on it to come in, and, uh, that's supposed to be set over the weekend, and then once that's set in place, the Marmac, the fire suppression people will come in, uh, and then the electrician will come in to tie the thing up, and then we're just down to some landscaping, so pretty quick.
Getting there, they're up there. Uh, Alma Health and Rehab, they're doing a really big expansion as well, they submitted plans for their phase one, and we've issued that permit. It's a two million dollar job, uh, that's just for phase one, so, uh, get ready for that construction as well. And then I passed my professional community and economic developer exams. And I'm Steve Alma as a professional community and economic developer. Uh, planning commission, uh, we met in September with the preliminary final plats over at Kong Grove. Uh, that was obviously passed by you guys last month. Uh, did not meet in October with no items on the agenda, we had at least one inquiry about a Zellie change and one about variants. And I believe Larry's also had a couple items as well, uh, but still waiting on that information really before the, uh, November meeting, so. Uh, surprise, we have an opening for planning commission, uh, outside the city limits, so if you know, buddy, I mean, uh. That's pretty much it. P B attended electrical school, and of course, he's sick today, or later today, so hopefully he gets better. And then I attended the floodplain conference as well, and our local Shannon Scott with Western Arkansas Plain Development District, she actually won, uh, floodplain manager of the year. So she does all the N I O and A D S for our meeting, so.
Any questions of Cody?
What I wasn't telling with the research and the building inspector Cody portion was that?
So I brought that up last year, so P B's gonna be retiring, not, you know, next year or the following year, but to get a certified inspector, that takes at least four years, I believe, for electrical. Um, all the other ones, I believe he can do in a year or two. Um, we've talked with one individual who's from this area, and he actually works for Smith. Uh, so that's what we're kind of banking on, but of course, it all depends on if it can fit the budget. So I know I brought it up to you guys before, but I know, Damon, uh, you've been a little late on that, so my fault.
And I wanna brag on Cody as, you know, passing the test, he, he wears many hats and he's very valuable to the city, he does an outstanding job. We're fortunate to have him, and congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Chief Porter mentioned Ms. Teague. Wayne has been helping Ms. Teague, and Wayne came in today, he said, do you think you could get a, a football helmet from down at the high school? And I said, well, I probably can, and Wayne says, well, I think Rhonda's there beating her head against the wall. I want to protect her, but anyway, she's done an unbelievable job in the last month, but anyway, let her visit about the finances.
All right, um, I do apologize, I would've done a quick little cover sheet, but, um, as you all know, I'm extremely busy figuring out what's in the world I'm doing, and what needs to be done, and what hasn't been done, and on top of still trying to make sure accounts payment is, is done, and we don't get any lights turned off anywhere. Um, and helping Ms. Peggy with questions at the front desk. But, um, I done a quick general fund and street fund or main fund balances there for you, those are the actual bank balances. And then I just pulled, I kind of looked back at some of the reports that, uh, you previously had gotten, um, and just pulled some of those balance and, and, um, summary reports on those funds. I will say, bear with us, these are gonna change quite a bit over the next couple of months, just because there's a lot of things that have not been put in any house and have not been properly processed and everything, so, um, we'll be merry with the report next, but just trying to figure out what in the world we've got and what needs to be done over the last month has been almost insurmountable, but we're getting there. And, um, I do appreciate Wayne's help, he's come in, uh, I've studied him a couple of times, I'm willing to say, I have a big question about this, and, and we sit down, we figure it out together, or we call someone in, in, um, Little Rock or, or whatever department is, it is addressing, so, uh, we are, we are getting there, um, bear with us, I'll, I'll get it figured out by the time y'all get a new clerk in seat. Y'all have any questions, and I would like to visit with you to do it at some point, or I'll just send an email to kind of know what, what you do, what is on the work that's.
Going forward, what would you all like to see?
It's a hilarious point from Tuesday, the rain date fund. How does, how do things air mark for the rainy day fund, how does that get?
We, we discovered some arrows in that today.
So, so when, when we do the turnbacks, three percent of that is what we found in the minutes, it was, is moved over, three percent of the general proportion is moved over into the rainy day fund. It has been put on the spreadsheet, but the action of that transfer never happened, never happened in Encode, it never happened in the two bank accounts. So, uh, we discovered that with, with this last, when I done the turnbacks myself this last time, I went back to some old reports and looked, and seen there had been some adjustments that should not have been made, so it just wasn't getting done properly. It will be moving forward, and we will go back and check all, catch all of those up for.
The sixty-three is a good number, though.
No, it's not.
It's not.
No, it is not.
It should be larger.
It should be larger, yes, it should be quite a bit.
Quite a bit larger.
It should be quite a bit larger.
Okay.
And it is on the spreadsheet, I should have given y'all a couple of that spreadsheet, um, but, um, but it will, it will reflect, we'll have that all caught up next, next to all of those, and we'll, we'll just have to postdate everything and get it all caught up in Encode and in the bank accounts.
Right. Okay.
But, um, back to Rhonda's initial question, is if there's something specifically that you would like to see each month? Email her or me or, or, you know, because we, we really want to get more accurate information and important information, and the information you want to see. And, and, just, obviously, the cash balances and all that, we will do, uh.
Well, I wanna say publicly, I know a couple of people have, but thank you so much for jumping in and grabbing hold of this and getting it, manag-, you know, managing it how you have, I know it's a monumental task, we had no idea things had gotten this far out as they had, and we may still keep discovering stuff, something like you are. Um, but really do appreciate the work that you're doing, and we have a lot of work to do today, at least to me, and I'm sure for the rest of the councilmen after that.
You're welcome. I appreciate the job.
So, I guess one of the questions are, we need to, we, we said for like Wayne's assistance, for whoever, we said probably about a thirty-day window for this, and then we would readdress that at the end of the thirty days.
Basically, we just wanted to make sure, you know, we didn't say let's do it for three months, and, and you and Wayne got it hashed out in three weeks, and he was like, I wanna go home, and you said you can't because it's in three months, you know, so.
No, it's working out very well, and, you know, I, I'd hope for more help on the payroll side, Destiny had done all of that, so we, but he still is excellent source of dollars for me to bounce things off of. Even though he didn't do it, I can bring something to his attention, and working together, we can talk out, you know, what makes sense on it, trial and error, and see, and make sure it works how it's supposed to on, on the Enco side to balance the budget and everything, so. It's working good.
So we want to continue doing that a little bit longer as.
I would, I would say for sure, at least.
Are you agreeable to that?
What's that?
Are you agreeable before, before I asked, she said, yes, are you agreeable if, if we need to continue to have some help? I know we mentioned a month originally, but.
Well, for, you know, um, I, I, yeah, I'm willing. I tell you what, Rhonda is working her fingers in a book, she is, you guys don't have any idea particularly how well she is doing, and how much work it is, and how good she is. And together, I mean, I just ask what she needs and this, that, and I, I see things that need to be done, and working together, uh, and the more she scratches the surface, guess what, we find out more stuff. So it may take a little while, but I'm willing to stick around, but I figure at least all the way through November, maybe possibly look into December.
So we see a light at the end of this audit panel, right?
Yeah.
We do, we do, we are seeing a light, you know, it, it, it's like I told him the other day, I, I can see a lot of things that need to happen, it's just gonna take a lot of great work to get it there. So, and that's where we're at, we just, I told Peggy earlier, and Peggy is helping a ton too, she's picked out some extra duties and checking off packets for me, I cleared that through the audits, and she's outside the clerk office, but I need someone to, to check, you know, just to make sure things are entered correctly, and just double-check invoices against, in, in, in that and all that. Um, so she's figured out some extra stuff there as well, but, um, it's just gonna take a, a ton of great work to get it done. I told her earlier today, I said, I, I've crammed so much into every minute of my day the last couple of weeks that I don't remember what all I've done. I've thought of a bill, is what brought it up, it's like, I don't know if I paid that bill, I had to go check.
I mentioned, uh, Tuesday night, uh, it's been amazing the response we've had from people willing and more than willing to help us. Uh, the auditor, uh.
Rochelle?
Yeah, Rochelle, uh, Rhonda emails her, calls her, she responds back, and as I said, she's gone to her supervisor, and her supervisor says she can come and stay a half a day here at no charge to the city, but we putting her off till we get some things put together. You know, but it's really been, and that, that's, that's just, that's fun, I mean, that people, when, when you're trying, people will help you, you know.
And I hate asking them all your questions, but.
But I, I think the auditors enjoyed it a little bit too, because they know our, our heart's in the right place, and we're trying to do right, and so they're, they're trying to help us, but, yeah, anyway, it's, it's, it's been fun, so I don't have to do as much work as they do.
Let me ask about, um, last month, we were gonna enter into a contract with my target professional, sorry.
Yeah.
I know.
We have, we, no, we're, we're still going to do it, we just literally had that.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Uh, and I, he called, and I called him, and I, he said, what's your target date? And I said, I don't have one, I said, you know, I, I would, November, but then I looked down, and that's two weeks from now, so. But we're definitely gonna pursue it, and it will relieve.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I think it'll help, but there's probably still some stuff y'all wanna get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a handle on the work.
We need to get the order to some things, um, and then figure out how that their program is gonna work in Enco, so they'll get an option, because we can't just let them do it and not work.
Right, right.
We'll be in progress.
Any, anything else, uh, that y'all wanna ask of Rhonda or Wayne, and, yeah? But it's gone well.
Thank you also, Wayne, I know, I, I thank her, but I know you've been, spent a lot of time out there helping as well, and, and, and do it out, we appreciate you.
I think Wayne's enjoyed it, I do.
He needed something to do.
I mentioned a, a couple of things on the park, uh, last month, I said we were going to help the, uh, disc park organization, uh, redo their signs and this and that, and I said it could probably cost about seven fifty, it could cost about fifteen hundred when all the bills came in, but, uh, they're pleased, they've had a couple of tournaments, and we, we've not gotten to the point that they're indestructible, but they're gonna have to work at it to tear them up from now on, and paint them or whatever, but we're in concrete with rebar and poles, and so Gordon didn't have to do that. I was very disappointed that the gentleman that was gonna stop by here the first week in October to look at our slides and everything at the park, uh, to see what maintenance we might need to do. But yesterday, uh, Mark took me to lunch with McClellan Group, and there was a young man named Chris Morris, and he said, and he emailed me today, he said, well, I'm working with some people out of Little Rock that I highly recommend, uh, and so we've contacted, and so this gentleman's gonna come up, hopefully next week, and, and look at, see what maintenance we need to do on, on that part of it. Uh, in a week from today, uh, we're going to Little Rock to meet with the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism Outdoor Recreation Grant, uh, to make our case, uh, to get, uh, playground equipment, uh, restrooms and things at Crystal Park. I, I don't know how to feel about it, it's my first run at it, but, uh, the scores we got on the sheet looked good. Uh, I, I don't know, I guess it depends on how much money they got and all that as well, we'll know pretty soon about that. And that's really all I've got about the parks, so. We, uh, one negative thing, uh, speaking of parks, uh, today we discovered that, and my numbers will not be totally correct. Uh, month of July, our total income into parks was either one eighty-five or one fifty-eight, something like.
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two, that's real close.
There was a five.
Thousand.
There's a one, there's a one. And so we have to file and use tax, send money in, and, and we reported that we had twenty-one thousand dollars in income for July, so.
You reported that for June?
June, yeah, I had paid for July. And so we had to pay tax and penalty and interest of about twelve thousand dollars, uh, and we, uh, but have, we have reported accurately for July and August and September.
And I want to add, we completed, since we won't have income for the maintenance.
So we've got, got that done, so that's good, back on track there, okay? And then on Mayor's remark, I was gonna compliment Cody, but we've already done, I'm not gonna do it again, we've already done. And I, I'm, I'm going to, as, as the meeting's over, I'm gonna hand, I mentioned that, uh, Mark and Rhonda and Wayne and I, I met with, uh, Kevin Fought and the S and P Rating Service, and got an A-plus rating for our bond issue. And I, I will hand this out to you later, it's the, it's the highlights of what they sent us, what they deemed that the city was, you know, how they rated us and everything. There might be some interesting reading for you. Uh, only other thing, issue department head, uh, as I know for a fact is working on their individual budgets, and I've started on ours too, and we'll start meeting together next week and hopefully get something to y'all pretty soon, and I'm sure we'll have to have a couple of work sessions to, to get through that. Uh, Monday, all the department heads in our meeting, uh, about our health insurance, we pay a hundred percent of the employee and approximately ninety percent of the family, and those numbers, uh, if I remember correctly, for an individual with family coverage, we pay about twenty-one thousand dollars a year, so that's a, you know, we, we all talk salary, and salary is so, so important, but boy, that's a heck of a benefit. Uh, all of you that work or share insurance knows it, uh, and we compared, uh, we got information from Greenwood, Ozark, Van Durin, uh, Mountainburg, a, a few cities, and I'll share it with. Van Buren, uh, Mountainburg, a few cities, and I'll share it with you later. And uh, only we in Van Buren pay like that, everybody else, some pay none, family the most, it's fifty percent family, so. And I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but boy, the cost, I mean, we pay like three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
So you're, we're looking at, thinking about bumping that down a little bit.
We, we're gonna talk about.
Right.
You know, just say, you know, it's, you know, it's a great, great benefit that I think can, you know, keep people here if they're interested in it. Sure, it seems like the older, but that more they are, but.
Even if we don't change that, making sure that we.
Explain to them what they got. That's, that's exactly what I.
I didn't know we were doing that, so.
Oh, okay.
That's news to me, and I, you get on campus.
Uh, uh, we've covered the, the various things uh, uh, that Wayne and and Rhonda do it so well. Uh, we've discovered that, I've mentioned that before, I'm not gonna go over that again. Uh, but Wayne has been very valuable. And in tonight, we, we approved a week, a month ago tonight to employ him for a month. Uh, and I would recommend we extend that for another month, under the same terms. Uh, he cheated once. He's supposed to work fifty hours a week, and he worked fifty-one. I mean, for two weeks, for two weeks, but he's worked about eight hours. He getting put down, so that worked out all right. But anyway, and uh.
Well, I would, I would be very grateful to to Wayne if he, uh, he would help us at least another month as we're working through getting these things squared away. Uh, so I don't know if we need a, any kind of motion, if we just wanted to amend it.
Uh, the way it read, I think we probably do need, we, we approved it for a month.
Okay.
Uh, thirty days, so I think we probably should, and that's a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's all I have, unless you have, ladies and gentlemen, have some questions or some comment.
Can you remind everybody, we got the Boo Fest coming up?
Uh, got the, everything, every organization in Alma has got something October the twenty-eighth. It's gonna be crowded, and that when the Boo Fest is in.
No, it's in the church.
Where's the thirty-birds?
Church.
No, it's on, okay, it's on the Halloween night. Uh, yeah, but I mean, on the twenty-eighth, the farmers markets, and the boys and girls club, and it's another organization, I mean, it's gonna be busy. Uh, but anyway. Uh, appreciate Ms. Hope being here tonight.
Thank you for the invite.
And Mr. Gann and uh Ms. Baker, appreciate y'all being here tonight. Does anyone have anything else?
I'm over the jern.
Have a motion, have a second.
Get a piece of cash.
All in favor, say aye.
It's drunken smiles.